Good evening, this is the Lakeville Select Board enacting as the wage and personnel board as needed, Lakeville Police Station 323 Bedford Street, August 15, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Please ask if anybody is recording the meeting and announce that cable is taping the meeting. First item on the agenda is going to executive session. I want to entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to general law chapter 30a, section 21a3, discuss strategy relating to pending litigation known as Scott versus Noe, ETAL, Lakeville Planning Board, Land Court Case 21 miscellaneous 000245, and Jenkins versus Noe, ETAL, Lakeville Planning Board, Land Court Case Number 21 miscellaneous 00252, because I declare that discussing the matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board and with the board to return to open session.
So, one second.
If I could with discussion, Mr. Chair, I think there's a typo in the motion and it should say Knox et al.
Thank you. Alright, so we'll modify that motion. Where are we here?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
You also left out, after miscellaneous 000252, the wording "votes may be taken."
Okay, well, that's not in my motion.
It's not?
That's on the agenda. He's talking the motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so what do I need to correct?
So, it's Scott versus Knox.
Scott versus Knox.
Et al, and Jenkins versus Knox et al.
Okay, so we'll modify that motion now.
Second.
All those in favor?
Carboni, aye.
Fabian, aye.
Uh, the camera, aye. Chairman of the Planning Board, Mark Knox, can you...
Should I open our hearing first?
Yes, please.
At this time, I'd like to open the meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is Monday, August 15, 2022, at 5:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to make a motion in a joint meeting with the selectmen. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to general law chapter 30a, section 21a3, to discuss strategy relating to pending litigation known as Scott v. Knox et al., Lakeville Planning Board, and Land Court Case Number 21 miscellaneous 000245, and Jenkins v. Knox et al., Lakeville Planning Board, Land Court Case Number 21 miscellaneous 000252, because I declare that discussing the matter in open session may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board and with the board, and not to return to open session. So, have a motion in a second. All in favor? Peter, Michelle, and myself. Motion carries with a majority.
Okay, um, we will be taking the minutes for both boards. I will be doing that for the executive session, just so you know. And for the public, we should be back in regular session, probably about quarter or six, thereabout, so everybody should understand that the meeting will continue in open session with the board of selectmen, but will not continue in open session with the planning board. Good evening, everybody. We're going back into regular session. So, the second thing on the agenda is to talk about the select board announcements. Okay, most of the Commonwealth Massachusetts, including the town of Lakeville, is currently in a level three critical drought phase. Commonwealth experiencing decreasing levels in some of the reservoirs, dry stream beds, ponds, diminished extent of streams in many watersheds, leading to lack of flow, increased higher water level, increase in growth of plants and algae in the water. Groundwater is slowly reacting. Index is starting to impact many regions. Residents are encouraged to practice water conservation in order to avoid overstressing of our water resources. Efforts to minimize water usage now will ensure the essential public health, safety, and environmental needs continue to be met. Your view and informational flyer is available on the town's website, town Facebook page, and the town's website under news. Okay, we have some exciting news that I think. We are going to have a new newspaper in town. It's gonna be called the Nemasket Weekly Newspaper, which they're gonna be covering Middleborough and Lakeville. So, that's great. That's where they used to be with the Middleborough Gazette. And we have, the editor actually is here this evening. I'm not gonna pronounce the middle name. Sandy Bowles, okay, is with us with the editor, and she's gonna be covering here in Lakeville, I don't know about Middleborough, but anyways. So, the good news is, is that, you know, Nemasket Weekly, currently, they produce Wareham Weekly, Dartmouth Weekly, and Cypicane Weekly, which covers Marion, Mattapoisson, and Rochester. So, we're excited that this is going to happen, and we can, Tracy can provide you the information about the contact information and so forth. Did you wanna say anything, Sandy?
I'm happy to be here. I'm looking forward to meeting everyone in town, and as Tracy will have my contact information, if you have story ideas, comments, thoughts, please send them along.
And the good news is, this is free. This is a free weekly newspaper, okay, which is big. So, I assume you'll be putting in strategic locations and stores and stuff like that. And the way they, you know, are doing this and keeping the newspaper free, they're looking for advertisers, too. They have a terrific website. It's very good. They update it all the time, not once a week. I see them updating, but every day.
They're live, yeah, or some people...
Right. So, the plan is supposedly, and I wanna make sure I'm right here, it's supposed to debut, uh, debut in Middleborough and Lakeville on August 18.
It's Thursday, so I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate that. Huge. Okay, next is early voting for the September 6 primary will be held at the Old Town House at Two Precinct Street, beginning August 27 and ending September 2 at 12:00 PM. The times, please go to the town website under news tab. Anyone that has requested a vote by mail ballot has been mailed out. Ballot started to be mailed out on August 6. Anyone that wishes to apply for vote by mail, your application must be received by the town clerk's office for the August 29. Okay. The town clerk wants everybody to know, there's 350 letters of past due dog licenses were mailed out. Please contact the town clerk's office. You receive one of these letters, but no longer own the dog. There are still vacancies available on the cable advisory committee, the open space committee, the capital expenditure committee, the master plan implementation committee, energy advisory committee, and the zoning board of deals. If you're interested in volunteering on any of these groups, please submit a letter of interest or a letter by mail or email. Okay, next on the agenda is the, does anybody else have anything you wanna, yeah? That's it. The town administrative announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have too much today. I'm pleased to announce that we have a tentative date to begin work on the fire station renovation. The town has hired Blue Sky, which is a firm with experience working on public safety facilities, to handle the demolition, carpentry, mill work. The remaining trades are other under contract that will be shortly. We've also been developing plans to address facilities maintenance long-term, anticipating submission of a facility, uh, anticipating submission of a facilities manager job description for the August 29 meeting. We'll also give you an overview of measures to address the project backlog. Also, on the 29th, we'll be talking about the problem properties initiative as well, and I'm really getting into our articles for town meeting, too. Next regular meeting of the select board will be on August 29 at 6:00 PM, the police station.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss an impossible vote to approve the national natural hazardous mitigation plan. This plan has been being worked on for a few years now, and Chief O'Brien is heading that up. And the chief, I guess, will give us a summary of where we are and where we're going.
Thank you, sir. This process started about three years ago, as you said. It really began with a directive from the board of selectmen, the select board, to see if I could find grant funding for a new generator for the town hall. And we were denied the opportunity to apply for the grant because we didn't meet the prerequisites. And so, that's, the journey started. And it started with consultation with Bill Napolitano, the back of the room, and it moved on from there. The document that was, that was put before you is a culmination of work from, from people from all of, all the departments in town. It's, uh, it represents outreach with the public. We had over 300 respondents to a survey that we sent out, so the, the concerns of the citizenry is represented in this document. And it lays out kind of a plan for, for where Lakeville should go next and how to do it, and, uh, and what actions to take. This document's good for five years, so approximately four years from now, we'll need to secure funding to, to update the document. As I mentioned before, the grant, uh, the grant that I applied to, I wanted to apply for is now, we now meet the prerequisites for, for multiple grant programs. So, there's opportunities to receive federal dollars to, to address some of our shortcomings when it comes to disaster mitigation or disaster preparedness.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Anybody have any questions on the document, which is, looks like about 100 pages?
It's very well put together. I think they did a nice job in hitting all the vulnerabilities.
And there was 15 members on this committee that reviewed all of this and put this document together. So, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution for the town of Lakeville National Natural Hazardous Mitigation Plan, whereas the town of Lakeville established a committee to update the town's local hazardous mitigation plan, and whereas the town of Lakeville participated in an update of the town of Lakeville's local hazardous mitigation plan, and whereas the town of Lakeville mitigation plan update contains several potential future projects to mitigate potential impact from national natural hazards in the town of Lakeville, whereas the duly noticed public hearing was held by the select board on August 15, 2022, for public and municipality to review the town of Lakeville hazardous mitigation plan update prior to consideration of this resolution, whereas the town of Lakeville also authorizes the responsible departments and agencies to execute their responsibilities demonstrated in this plan. Now, therefore, to be resolved, the town of Lakeville Select Board formally approves and adopts the town of Lakeville hazardous mitigation plan update in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, adopted and signed this August 15, 2022 by the select board.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I will put this in the sign folder. Tracy, so we can sign this before we go.
Excellent. I'm glad that we've gotten this, this piece done.
A lot of people, a lot of you worked hard to get this across the finish line, and I'm relieved. So, thank you for supporting it, sure.
Chief, this certification adoption, do we have to vote on this, or is that outside?
I think that's just what you did.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is an update from Serped on the Assawamset Pond Complex matters. Lee, I know you're already representative for the APC, so would you wanna take care of this?
Uh, sure. So, I know Helen's been with us before, but this is Helen from Serped, and with her is Bill Napolitano, also from Serped. They're part of the regional planning agency that most of us use on the South Shore, I guess we could say. So, this has been a two-year process with the planning for the Assawamset Pond Complex. It was originally started with a $100,000 MVP grant, and there was all kinds of study done. There were all kinds of outreach meetings done to the public in various towns, and we came up with a list of 12 items, isn't that correct, that, um, that all stakeholders deemed to be the most important to help prevent flooding in the future. And that would be this list that we have right here. And now, the steps going forward would be to try to get financing for many of these individual, um, these individual projects. So, I don't know if you want us to read them, Mr. Chair, or, um...
I don't know, Bill, or Helen, wanna give us an overview? Wanna do that?
Sure. Me, too. Yeah, yeah, thank you guys for...
Just, I'm sorry. State your name for the record, please.
Sure. Helen Zinkavage, Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. And, go ahead, Bill, you can say your name.
Bill Napolitano, environmental planner, Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District.
So, thank you guys for having us back. We were last before you in March, when we first talked about this 12-point plan, and the urgency of doing so at that time, I was like, so maybe, I don't wanna say premature, but we were finishing up the APC and Nemasket River Management Plan. At the same time, we were finalizing that, we were, so Senator Rodriguez mainly secured for the region some ARPA funds to get us started implementing the things that we were planning for. So, we wanted to make sure as we were going forward with spending down those funds and putting them to work, we were doing so in a way that regional towns felt most helpful, most appropriate, most prioritized actions. So, that, at the time, we were here and we went over this list, you know, to that end, this is a priority list that we were going to follow to spend these funds. The first priorities here, number one was to address sedimentation buildup with an emergency action to basically dredge a portion of the upper Nemasket River. So, that's kind of mainly what we're here to talk about tonight. So, I'll save that one a little bit, and just kind of give you an update on the rest that are on the sheet here. The second was the removal of invasive weeds from Long Pond, and thanks to mainly the work of Bill here, but also members of the Long Pond Association, the newly formed nonprofit, representing some of the stakeholders in that area. Those two entities worked together on permitting, and we were able to secure a permit for weed removal this summer. So, we initiated that. It's basically ongoing now. Will be done on Wednesday. And this is just the first year of what we hope will be a repeat process in Long Pond. Now that we have the permit in hand, it's good for five years, and we'll be able to go back to the local boards and the state agencies that approved that permit, and basically just update the target area from year to year, and have their sign off on a new target area with the same weed removal mechanisms, same kind of process. We're limited, every time we do this, to a seven-day window. It just kind of is a matter of where that seven days falls. So, Bill, do you wanna speak to that anymore? Please, go ahead.
Yeah, part of this, with the permit, Natural Heritage gave us a seven-day limit, and Tom Barron was in the audience tonight, and I'd really have to say that the Middleborough Lakeville Herring Fisheries Commission kind of blazed the trail to use the Echo Harvester in this particular watershed as an alternative method to weed removal. A lot of times, you get, you know, different, different ideas to remove this, and some of us go back more than 20 years with the old Assawamset Pond's plan, and how we want to, grass-eating carp, vomit with chemicals, you know, do, do whatever we can to get rid of the weeds. And historically and chronically, when nothing gets done, the problem just gets worse. So, we were very fortunate again. I've been out there to work with the crew. The Echo Harvester crew has been great. We are gonna take advantage of the full seven days with the permit this time. The cost is pretty much on a par of what it was with the Fisheries Commission last year. It's a little over $7,000 a day, but that includes the harvesting, the hauling, the site containment. The permitting has been rolled in there, the whole bit, so it's pretty cost-effective as far as a good method, and the results on the pond have been fabulous, where they've actually gone in there. One of the things that I always notice when I went out there to do site surveys is, you didn't get a lot of top water flow. You couldn't see it because the plants were there, so it looked like the water wasn't moving. We went out there the other day in the areas that they've harvested. It's amazing. Not only can you see bottom, because a lot of the pond's shallow, but you can actually see water circulating and moving in the pond. Now, you're getting a lot of top water movement. So, it's been good. We've gotten a lot of good feedback. And like I said, you know, through the graces of the funding and the permitting, we actually had a chance to take it out to seven days this year. The limiting factor, and Helen alluded that we do have a limiting factor with seven days, is the Northern Red-Bellied Cruder, which is on the federally endangered species list. We had to deal with the same thing in the Nemasket River, but because of the Nemasket's a flowing body of water, we had a three-day limit for potential disrupting hatchlings in the first two weeks of August. This is a closed body, and like I said, Natural Heritage gave us, you know, the one, the one week. It's worked out well, and it's been pretty seamless as far as the efficiency and operation. The sites we went back and chose to do, because this is the first time in, so the first time you wanna make sure that you're efficient, use your money wisely. We looked at the old reports that I was just referring to, the new assessment that was done, and then before we decided on the sites, the Long Pond Association actually went out there and did a boat survey. We said, these are the sites that look like they could be potentials. Go out and see if there's still the quad sites, what's really bad out there, what could wait another year, the whole bit. So, we picked the sites that way. We mapped them that way, and responded to Natural Heritage's Turtle Management, Endangered Species Management Plan that way. I was drafting a lot of that up, and like I said, I was working with the Long Pond Association. Hats off to people like John Wally, Martha Wally, Bren Ladino, been around forever, those people. But everybody out there who's really contributed, I had a great team back on my side, and Maria Gabriel, who used to work for Natural Heritage, she's with the nature concerns, she worked, she worked with us a lot, too, to get this done. So, it's been, it's been a great process. It really is.
Okay. Any other updates?
Um, well, I just wanna reiterate that that permit is renewable for four more years, so we won't have to start all over again at the beginning of next year to refill out the entire application.
Exactly. It's not even, it's not even renewable. The permit's good for five years, so you can work, you work the same way that Mass. DOT does, when they come in and maintain their outfalls. You just notify the local conservation commissions, you're gonna be working on the same project under the same permit, and you tell them where you're gonna be, so we'll map it out. And again, now that we've been out there, mapping out process should go well.
So, one of the questions that I have is that, all these studies and reports and stuff that have been done over the number of years, specifically the last couple of years, how many acres of, of water has got weeds in it?
How many acres, I mean, it's gonna be impacted as far as the weed removal? They say there's up to 200 acres, but when they went out and did the lake survey, it's not like a solid pack 200 acres. Some places are sparse, some places are really dense.
So, how many acres did we do this past week, or whatever?
We did at least 10 acres.
Okay, so...
But the 10 densest acres.
Right. So, isn't there a concern that, you know, if it's gonna take up to five years, and if you do 10 acres, I don't know what it is, 10 acres a year, that problem isn't going away, you know, because it's gonna be there. I don't wanna say for a long time, but it, you know, you know as well as I do, Bill, this stuff grows like crazy.
It does grow like crazy, yeah.
So, why wouldn't National Heritage allow us, the town, whoever's doing this, go do some more right now, you know?
Well, here's, here's one of the things we got going for us, Rich. That's a great question, because when you get the habitat evaluator out there, there's a line in the letter from Natural Heritage that sets the permit standards that says, if the habitat evaluator goes out there and determines that there's not significant enough impact of the habitat, the time of season may change to allow you to go in there, and we may be able to pick up some more time going in there. And the things that we wanted to knock off this year, like I said, going way back to when you and I were talking about it, to when, you know, everybody, Nancy was talking about it, we wanted to get those historically clogged, chronically bad areas. And one of the things that we've been talking to people about in those areas, too, is stewardship, like set up buffers. If your yard is on the edge of the pond, set up a three-foot buffer strip and get plants that are gonna absorb the phosphorus and nitrogen coming off your lawn, so you don't feed the shoreline anymore. And people are starting to buy in, and these are the types of programs that we may be able to implement with this money, too, to help people set up buffer strips, the whole bit.
Well, which brings up another point, and you know, I've brought this up a number of times, is that, you know, we're not doing anything to prevent it from happening, okay? Especially at the boat ramp, okay? That's where it's all coming in, right? You know, especially with these fishing tournaments and so forth, and what was discussed a year ago, even back in March, I think, was the proposed washing station to try to prevent this. What's the status of that?
Yeah, so...
Are you gonna cover that down here?
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. Let's, let's jump to it, because that's good. I pretty much will just go, go over the ones, the ones in green here, there's five, right? Those are the ones that we are making good progress on, or at least have like a funding stream identified for the next steps. So, the boat wash station, not down at number seven there, the two that we just talked about, we mentioned sedimentation and weeds, those are really the focus of that 250,000 ARPA allocation. The state reps, again, this year were able to accomplish another $250,000 grant for the system. And so, we're in the process, this time, instead of, last time we kinda had to put it in an application, this time they directed it directly to Serped, which makes things a lot easier. We can just hammer out a scope with them and move forward. So, the items on, the high priority items for that scope that we're, you know, still putting together, so, you know, please give us your input tonight if, if you have other ideas, but basically is to, to do the design and engineering of a boat washing station as one of those items. And then the other item would be to start to look at the engineering and what it would take to replace the culvert between Long Pond and Assawamset Pond.
Staying on the boat, you know, and Bill and I go back years. We talked about these issues not a long time ago. We talked about septic system problems and so forth and so on, which is a major problem, you know, that's causing pollution in the, in the pond. And as you probably know, since you've been out there recently, you can see the development that's going on out there, especially with new houses and converting, you know, summer homes into year-round homes and, and all that. So, the congressman had said to us that there's plenty of money in the quote-unquote "infrastructure" bill, you know, that he wanted to pursue to provide some of that funding. Have we looked into that funding for the boat ramp?
Is that Representative Rockin Claus?
Yeah.
I'm not sure on the federal level if we have gotten there for the boat ramp, but the state funds that we're putting in motion for the next fiscal year are really the, the starting point to that, because they'll allow for the design and engineering of a boat washing station. So, Wednesday, actually, Wednesday morning, we have a meeting scheduled onsite with Freetown, Doug Cameron, who's with the Office of Voting...
Fishing Voting.
Fishing Voting, yeah. And a couple of the reps, state reps. So, someone is welcome to attend from Lakeville, although it is happening in Freetown, but you're welcome to attend. So, no, we do think that that is like one of the key next steps to putting that boat washing station in there. And so, yeah, that's, we're, we're programming that for this next $250,000 allocation.
I think it's gonna be more than $250,000.
It very well, I'm sure it will be.
With us for the engineer.
That's my point, is that, you know, all this federal funding is... That's my point, is that, you know, all this federal funding is available right now. Huge money. Water infrastructure money and stuff like that. We ought to at least, you know, try to get requests in to try to get some of that money because.
Maybe we're, maybe we're talking about when we tried with the.
Oh, yeah.
The culvert.
Yeah, and it ties into actually the hazard mitigation plan that was approved tonight. So we did try to request some, you know, design, design, design engineering permitting and construction for that, the culvert. But it seems like the federal representatives need, need a federal program to channel that money through sometimes, at least. That's the impression I got from the process. So they were thinking in this case, the most appropriate way to funnel that was through FEMA, FEMA's BRIC program, but you need an approved hazard mitigation plan. So that's where that kind of cut that off. Once we all realized that that path wasn't going to be possible, we had to, you know, the other applications that were sent in to the federal reps became higher priority. So now that that's in place, and especially if we can have some of the money go toward design engineering for the Snake River culvert, we're trying to, construction money is a whole different thing. I mean, it's not tens or hundreds of thousands, it's millions of dollars. So with these allocations that we're getting from the state, our goal is to do what's possible within that scale of funding, which is the design engineering and permitting.
Well, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Ari, that in the, the state bond bill, the infrastructure bond bill, there's, there's $3 million.
That's true.
So what do we need to do to get that released, to get this thing moving? Because they have a tendency to sit there for years and they, they don't do anything. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
The fact is with the change in the district, it's coming, it's probably going to be a while for it. And the fact is with this.
We still have Governor Baker replaced until the end of the year. But, you know, it's, it's, I mean, the key thing we talked about from 2010, right? Had to do with the flooding issue, okay? And we've been lucky so far. And the culvert is one of the problems. And the dam on the Nemasket is another problem, okay? Which we're going to talk about, I guess, in a minute. But it's huge. I mean, you're talking millions of dollars in damages to people's property that happened, you know? And I would say that this is a pretty high priority, in my opinion.
Yep.
So I guess.
Yeah, at least with the engineering done, let's say we can get most of the engineering done for the culvert, that we will be ready, let's say, to apply for, or to try to push the money out of the bond bill.
Yeah.
Okay. Who is responsible for that project?
For putting it in the bond bill?
No, doing the project itself, not the state.
Yeah, it would probably be, we'd have to do it in partnership with Mass DOT, but they do partnership projects. They've done them out on the Cape, they've done culvert projects. And the fact that you now, hallelujah, I was so happy to be involved with that hazard mitigation plan. Now that you have one, you are eligible for BRIC funding. So like what Ari was saying, Helen was saying, if we can get the engineering design permitting out there and then go in for a construction project, which is pretty much what that is, we'd be in really good shape. Same thing on the Nemasket Bridge, you know, all the flooding problems, Nemasket itself is a problem. For years I've been talking about holistic restoration of the Nemasket, from the dam, get rid of the sediment up there, get rid of the sediment, the pinch points at the MBTA bridge, and all the way down to what Helen's going to talk about later. That, that really holds up flows tremendously, so.
I agree. I've seen it.
Oh, and Freetown, you guys must know, Freetown got a $25,000 grant too, to bring, run electricity to the boat ramp and, you know, upgrade the kiosk there and all of it. So that's, that's key to it too. They don't have electricity there. Once you get electricity there, that opens up a whole new world.
Yeah. So Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure.
So I had spoken with Helen and Bill a couple of weeks ago and, you know, while I give it my all and I've attended, I don't know how, I don't think I've missed too many meetings. We agreed that it's probably best that all the emails or communications go through at least the town administrator's office. It's up to the town administrator whether he wants to, you know, appoint a staff member to help me out or, you know, if I'm going to be the helper then. But I, I think that we agreed that because some of this stuff maybe, maybe coming up that, you know, we do have Nancy Yates, who's our agent, but I think it would work great. The communication would go much quicker if it goes right to either, to the town administrator. So we can be sure that we're not missing, you know, he's there five days a week and on Saturdays and Sundays too. So, and if it goes to him, he won't miss things, I'm sure.
Well, that's good. He and I work the same schedule.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I think because some of this other, you know, work is going to involve me, perhaps the state and everything, that we need to have more than just a volunteer basically as the point person, so.
Okay, you want to continue, Helen?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and interrupt me, you know. So the last one we haven't really talked about yet is Middleboro, the Middleboro Wareham Street Dam removal. So this one, it is a priority and we did have a great community meeting a couple months back to kind of talk about some of the alternatives that have come out of a hydrologic and hydraulic study of the upper Nemasket. And removing the Wareham Street Dam does seem to buy you significant topography in a relatively flat river, give you the ability for increased flow. And so it is one of these really important projects that we want to pursue to help keep the river moving along its course. And so with a, with a grant we already have in-house, we are doing a initial feasibility study with PAR and Hoise Witten. So they're working on that right now. We were out at the project site in July and kind of just kicking around, what would it take to, to, how would you actually do this? Would you have to reroute traffic? Would you, you know, trying to think through some of those initial concepts and kind of challenges that you might meet if you were taking out that dam? Because of course it wouldn't just be removing the dam, it would also be widening, widening the bridge to accommodate the appropriate stream crossing standard of 1.2 times bank full width of the river. So of course it is an involved project, but we're hopeful that that feasibility study will allow us to put in for additional grant funding. Potentially, you know, it depends on how much some of these other items cost. We have rough scopes for each of these 250K, but if we're able to save money in one place, maybe we can reroute some of it to Wareham Street because that is really another intense priority in terms of getting this system to flow. So we do have that in process and we have budget to, you know, come back and have meetings like this, have meetings with staff, once we are more, just have a couple more preliminary questions answered, that we can be maximally helpful in a conversation like this. But the engineering firms are working to sort those out. And so we should have an update sometime in the fall about how some alternatives and choices we might have for Wareham Street Dam.
Okay.
So on the Wareham Street Dam, I honestly can't remember, I apologize, but is the intent to keep the herring ladder there?
It would be true.
Or is that going to change?
Yeah, it would be a whole, so since you would no longer have the dam to kind of have, that they have to get around, it would just be part of the stream channel. So it would probably involve a slight adjustment of the channel, some of the banks over there are pretty steep. And of course you have the old electrical facility, so kind of trying to make sure you're moving away from that. But, and it would, that, that park would change pretty drastically. So that would be, have to be part of that kind of community conversation about this and how we want to move forward. Luckily, it is kind of happening at apropos times, since DPW, you know, that's, that's vacant now and that's, I think the intention there is that that would become a park area. So hopefully a lot of the nice, you know, there's like brick pavers with people's name, a lot of the things that are already there, the kiosks about the herring could hopefully be relocated across the street.
Okay, just going back to the Nemasket River, so you're asking us, I believe, next on the agenda is to approve the permit. So that is going to be done right away, at 1,200 feet?
We're trying, yeah, yeah, as soon as possible. So the next step is to, so building off of the work that the Lakeville, Middleboro Lakeville Herring Fisheries Commission did, they had initial surveys done of that, basically the first 600 feet. And we have to go to define the project area for that dredge, we have to go a little bit further, we have to formalize the engineering drawings, the techniques that we think would be used for the dredging, because there are a few options and they might have changed given the drought. You may not be able to do a hydrodredge anymore, you might have to do something more land-based, given just the flow out there right now, if we were to do this this fall. So right now we have our request for quotes out to a couple of engineering firms to help prepare basically the application materials for those, for that project, because we're starting really at the permitting process stage here. And in, in talking it over with, with state folks and various agencies, we would need, since this is, you know, obviously involves both Middleboro and Lakeville, we need permits from both Middleboro and Lakeville Conservation Commissions. And while Serpent, you know, that ARPA money will be funding all of that permitting work, it's not appropriate, we don't think, for us to be the applicant for the, for this sedimentation work. It's really, you know, locally driven process. So we're hoping that both boards of select, both select boards will agree to serve as the applicant to the conservation commission and then subsequently to the different state agencies that we need to get permits from. So that's what we're asking or hoping to accomplish tonight, is to kind of get that sign off on your guys' participation and willingness to be the applicant for the permit.
I, I just got one more question. Bill, if you remember, I don't know, a long, long time ago, we put together a booklet, you know, for the, all the people on Long Pond, the residents of Long Pond, what they need to do to protect the, the ponds and so forth and so on and whatever. Is there any plan to do that again?
We could certainly update that because we have education materials in the, in the hopper for this type of project, absolutely.
I think, you know, that ought to be something that should be considered, you know, Leah, when you discuss it with the APC, because people assume they're doing the right thing and they're not necessarily doing the right thing.
Yeah.
And the washing station is a key thing, but as you know, and there's, there's more than one boat ramp on there, by the way.
There is.
There's at least three that I know of. And there may be a few other ones here and there. But, so that's a concern because, you know, if you continue, you, you as well as I know, that if we continue the way we are, they're going to kill that lake.
Yeah, we're just getting a vicious cycle. You're absolutely right, yeah.
So I think that ought to be, you know, considered, Leah, for this meeting, discuss that as a possibility. I, I happen to have a document that I have and I can give it to you, that we use in my lake up in Maine.
That would be great.
Very, very good. It's excellent. And everybody gets it and you better follow the rules. You better make sure you wash your boat before you put it in the water. I mean, they're very, very strict up there and they get some serious fines if you don't.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that's an issue as well.
And anything that you have to, you know, to pass on to us that we can use as a sample or template.
I'll give it to Leah.
That would be fabulous. And I know we're working as far as the buffer strips go too.
That was my next question.
Yeah, yeah.
What is a buffer strip?
Part of, part of the stuff that we're doing for education, one of our partners is Save the Bay, Kate McPherson, who's the baykeeper over there. And she's done a wonderful program for buffer strips along the rivers and streams in parts of Rhode Island and even up, up in the Massachusetts and Seco. And she would be willing to work with us to help implement a buffer strip program up here, which is, I mean, it's wonderful. It's someone who, you know, does this. It's not like you have skin in the game. The whole idea is to educate people on what they should do if they live around a pond or even a flowing body of water like the Nemasket River. So those are the types of people we want to bring in, team approach again, to get good education materials out there, because you're absolutely right. If you, if you don't learn your lessons, you know, once you clean up the room, it's going to get messy again if you don't set down some rules and the pond will just have the same problems.
So, no, just one more thing. I do know that when our conservation commission gives out a permit, they do hand out some materials on good stewardship, but there really is no enforcement. So, you know, if someone wants to do whatever they, whatever they want, they can. My, my bigger concern is I have spoken to some folks who have joined the Long Pond Association about this issue and, you know, they're, they're, they've expressed to me that they've never heard anything about this. So it's kind of hard for us as the selectmen and select board to, I, I feel like we're involved in that we're working with our state partners to try to get funding, but we don't really have a hand in what, you know, the actual Long Pond Association is doing. I mean, we didn't, the town didn't hire the Echo Harvester people, you know, that's kind of going through between Serpent and the Long Pond Association. But, so I would hope that, you know, we would all encourage, and I've, you know, spoken to Martha Worley and, you know, I tried to express that we all need to be on the same page here, you know, especially when we're applying for grants or, you know. But I did speak to a couple of people from the association who just joined and they were like, oh gee, we haven't really heard anything at all about stewardship. And that's a huge part. That's what we've been talking about for two years in this MVP process, you know, steward, everybody's stewardship, all of those folks who may use the river to go canoeing on, you know, don't put your trash out there, same thing, try, you know, don't put one boat from one place right into the other. You know, we spent a lot of time over the last two years talking about that. So, you know, I just, I'm just hoping that we can all just sort of keep the communication going and make sure all the, you know, stakeholders know. And, and, and we will periodically to check in with our own conservation commission to make sure that, you know, they're handing out the proper information or, you know, if information changes, that, you know, whether that be, again, folks that are getting permits for Long, that live on Long Pond or anywhere along the, the river, so.
Okay, anybody got any questions out there?
I have something I can.
Sure.
I know that this was a, a great initiative. It's really nice to see that, you know, the, the work that had gone into putting, you know, the stuff on the shelf has actually come off the shelf and is getting, you know, practices. But in listening to, to everybody, you know, as we were developing, you know, this program and this evening, that it might be advantageous for us to maybe even consider putting together a maintenance plan of the key things that we're talking about here that might fall under things that we can do, you know, ongoing to make sure that we mitigate a lot of the things from happening again. So, you know, we did the initial, maybe there's a maintenance plan that incorporate the good stewardship and, so just a consideration, a thought?
Yeah, I think that, I think it's, it's a great thought because there were definitely, while there's this 12-point plan, the manager, the larger management plan has tens of recommendations and some of them are things like, you know, make sure you have adequate no-mo zones and make sure those are demarcated and people are trained. So there are definitely these like ongoing maintenance components that we could aggregate and kind of.
Give it its own.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a great opportunity for you guys, you know, doing those types of things. Go to the Long Pond Association and meet with them because the invitation's always open. You can always go. And one of the things that I've heard this week being out in Freetown, so I'll go, I'll go out and even Lakeville and check every day to make sure, you know, you do your due diligence. These are people we hired. And a lot of people now are actually talking about stewardship. It's amazing because one of the messages we try to give when people are there and they're watching the harvest and the lakes say, the lake will stay clean if you're good stewards. That's why the management plan is a stewardship plan. And I, I said this at the final meeting of, you know, to see your plan. A plan doesn't have life unless you give it life. So now it's, it's built upon the public's words. I said, now you have to own your own words, which goes back to the stuff that we were talking about, Rich. Own your own words, make sure that you're doing the things that will help keep your pond safe, clean, you know, the best of your ability.
Yeah. I think, Helen, it might be a good idea that, you know, this meeting in Freetown, the state agencies are going to be there too.
Yeah, for the boat ramp.
It might be a good idea to discuss this issue, okay? Because this is a major issue that somebody needs to address and need to monitor, you know, so. But that's just a thought.
It's a good thought.
Hey, Kenny, Tom, you want to come up here, Tom?
Sure.
Please. Tom, why don't you go right over there and by the microphone?
Okay.
Sorry.
You can hear me.
I can hear you, but Lake Cam's in the back.
The mics are more for Lake Cam.
All right.
I just have a few questions. Please say your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Tom Darren.
Mr. Chair, are we on item, are we on the?
We're still on five.
Okay, we're not on the river yet.
No.
No.
No, we haven't made.
All right, thank you.
You talked about the Wednesday meeting. Where is it and what time?
It's at the boat ramp at 9:00 AM.
Thank you very much. All right, just a couple of questions I had. The Echo Harvester costs $7,000 a day. And when they were doing this project, what did they do with the weeds? They heard the first day somebody took it for fertilizer.
No.
Okay, that's what I heard. That's what I'm just.
They're going up to the sawmill, Gary's property.
Okay.
He has a tremendous amount of land. The guys who are from the Echo Harvester, they take their dumps to their truck and their dump trailer and they're laying it right out. The property is so big, they're laying it right out in windrows. And what we have to do is for two weeks, three times a week, monitor those windrows to make sure that there's nothing in them. And so far, so good.
Okay, so the Echo Harvester was transporting it up to the sawmill?
The the truck, the truck and the trailer. Yeah, they they did it for us as part of the.
Okay.
Part of the fee, yeah.
The other thing on the sedimentation and the weed removal, we have $250,000 that was appropriated, then another 250. So that 500,000 is to go for the sedimentation removal and the weed removal.
Just, yeah.
Because, well, the reason why I asked, because then it was, you talked about the Baskill Dam and and other things too. How much of that money is appropriated for the sedimentation and the weed removal?
Really, the first, the ARPA, the first 250,000.
Just the first 250.
And then, so we, because the language for the FY23 fiscal, that appropriation does mention specifically doing some kind of effort toward Long Pond invasive weed management, but it will probably be things like the boat washing station. So we kind of want to, we want to pivot some of this next this next chunk into advancing these other projects.
All right, another thing, when you talk about the Watham Street Dam, that would be the Baskill Dam that you're talking about, the one that's approximately 10 feet height. You didn't talk about the diverted dam, the one that's located down from, maybe 150 feet down from it. And that's a three-foot high.
When we talk about it, we talk about, we just kind of, it's groups both into one phrase, but yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then just the other thing, when you said the preliminary study was for 600 feet downstream of the river, I believe in the study that we did, I think they went down 1,850 feet, you know, from the dam.
They, for different degrees, they definitely did sediment probing further down.
Yeah.
But kind of the the full survey information that we need for this next phase, it was limited.
The details were 600 feet and they did probes 1,800 feet down. So cross sections for the river there.
Okay, because in the information I have, from the dam to approximately 1,150 feet down from the spillway, the river bottom appears to have a fluffy top layer of organic muck or silt that varies in thickness from one to six inches.
Yeah.
That's the first 1,150 feet. And then they talk about from approximately 1,150 feet to 1,450 feet downstream of the spillway, the river bottom appears to be stony and rocky, little silt or organic. And then from 1,450 to 850 feet down, they talk about how much muck and stuff isn't. So I was just wondering, the 600 feet, that's all.
Yeah, they were they were looking at, and they said, in order to get a good handle on the sediment spread, the area of influence of sediment, they have to go back and do the rest of it in greater detail. They said first on 600 feet, definitely, but after that, they're going to go back and do that. That's hopefully, that's the hour queue that we just put up.
Okay.
That's our next, that's definitely our next project. We're going to hop on that.
I know, I know, because that is the most important. And I know you talk about dams, but for example, you mentioned the Aswanza Dam. Right now, the Aswanza Dam is what? Totally useless because there's no water getting to it. And every single year that we have high water, when all the boards are pulled and everything else, the water doesn't flow out of it because, as we say and I say at every meeting, the roof is clogged. So, I mean, any work about the Aswanza Dam, it's useless in high water and it's useless in drought conditions.
So like you and I have talked about a lot, and we've got to reestablish that gradient. We've got to get the gradient back over here and then reestablish that gradient so it flows. It gets back to things we talked about 20 years ago, too.
Okay, anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay, so next on the agenda is to discuss and vote and designate the Lakeville Select Board as the applicant to obtain the notice of intent from the Lakeville Conservation Commission for the project to remove obstructive sediment from the first 1,200 feet of the Damascus below the APC dam. So will entertain a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? You want to say anything about that?
Any other questions to what we covered already?
This is from the Lakeville Conservation Commission, so where the applicants to.
Where the applicants.
Our only conservation commission.
Okay, any further discussion? Call those in favor.
Addict.
All right, okay. Thanks for coming. We appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We look forward to working with you. We've got a couple of years to do this.
Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss a possible vote to schedule a Fall Town meeting on November 14th, 2022. So Tracy has provided a proposed schedule. I think the 14th with with the with the elections going on and everything and having to do with holidays during the month of October, November 14th is probably a good day. But what I would like to do is change the schedule, the schedule of the town meeting on August 29th instead of September 13th. And I would like to see us open the warrant on August 29th and then close the warrant on September 16th because what's proposed by Tracy that the warrant would only be open for nine days and I really think it should be open longer than that.
Do you mean the 22nd?
I'm sorry, I wrote the 16th. The 22nd, that's fine, 22nd.
Right, okay.
I don't know why I wrote the 16th, but I didn't. So we will on the 29th discuss the special town meeting and call the special town meeting.
All right, so change that. Okay, so schedule.
Mr. Chairman, my main purpose, and this is fine, my main purpose in going for the 13th was to give, do some time to see what we had proposed for articles. I didn't give any guidance back, but we can do certainly open up the warrant and do that same time.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, I just think that nine days is not long enough.
We're going to have, we're going to have, I, the more I've seen the list develop.
Yep.
The more I think you're right, it's going to be a really meaty Fall Town meeting.
So, I mean, one of the things, I know you've given us a draft list of things here, you know.
That's a living document. It's changing all the time.
Right, so what we need to do is, and I could talk to you about this for the agenda for the next meeting, is the specific ones on here that we should probably talk about to get them resolved and get them moving, you know, in the right direction.
Yeah, we'll have that discussion.
So we'll do that on the 29th as well.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Helen.
So that's August 29th, right?
Yes.
Schedule it.
Schedule it.
And then open the warrant.
On August 29th.
August 29th.
In a way, the main distinction is that we're opening the warrant for a longer period.
Right, right.
That's it, yeah. Okay.
Which is nice, okay. And then just maintain the rest of the.
Well, we may have to talk about one day, but we'll get there on the 29th about voting the articles and whatever, from a scheduling standpoint, but we don't have to discuss that tonight. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is to is to discuss a possible vote to vote to intend to lay out Ledwood Drive as a public way. We we have been given the information about the process and I I am not familiar with this process. Looks like the process has changed. A couple of things that I think need to be looked at. The first thing is that the the Planning Board needs to adopt regulations for the acceptance of public ways. So that needs to be addressed, Mark, you know, as well. So did you want to say something about that?
Yeah, there might, there might be something in the, there are current planning board rules and regulations for that. I'd have to check though.
Okay, but one of the things that looking at this is that we don't have the town engineer and the DPW director, you know, look at the road and look at the drainage until later in the process. In my opinion, that ought to be done first to determine if there's any kind of problem, you know, with the road, if there's any kind of problem with the the drainage, which in the past has been a problem, you know, for certain developments. So I I would like to see us postpone this until the 29th.
As it relates to Ledwood Drive?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, as it relates to Ledwood Drive, it's been inspected. It was inspected on January 20th, 21 by environmental partners. And aside from a few minor cleaning issues related to its whale and a outlet structure, there were no problems with that project.
Right, but that's a year and a half, though.
Right.
I also know that those terms tend to lay out, it's not any type of determination on the part of the board as to whether it's going to accept this property or not, or should accept this or not.
Don't understand, but once we do it, then the planning board has 45 days.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
I don't think we should do that right now. That's me.
Mr. Chairman, usually when this does come in front of the board of selectmen, if there are letters of recommendation or findings, that usually comes with with the packet itself. So it just makes it a little easier for us to make sure that the questions that are being asked are.
Maybe the drainage hasn't been maintained in the last year and a half.
You go out there a month ago with the developer, Paul Turner, did walk the site with him and didn't see anything significant, though I did not have this memo at the time. So I can go back out prior to your next meeting, look at these couple spots that they identify here, make sure that they're stabilized and submit a memo for the for the next board meeting.
And I would like to also have the DPW director go look at it.
He's done that as well and submitted a letter of findings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just, just for the board's reference, just to note, if it's if it's the board's intention to try to get this on for the Fall Town meeting, we just, I mean, we just got this thing, so it's kind of, it's like we've been sitting on it. But it'll, if the planning board takes the full 45 days, we're going to run into some problems as far as the time it goes.
Honestly, decide at the next meeting.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
I don't know why I keep thinking that the town wasn't going to accept any more roads, wasn't there something like that?
It was impossible not to accept any more roads.
There was discussion about it and I know I worked with, you know, Franklin on this to to research some other communities that had put, you know, stopped in place. It's, you know, up to the board, obviously, to accept this, but there are some communities that have decided that they're not accepting any more public.
I just want to be sure that.
Right, we never, we did not, we did not.
Okay, all right.
It wasn't conclusive in that, so.
When there were specific projects that came in front of us, we did send a recommendation to the planning board that we were not going to accept these things.
Right.
So I don't think this one applies, but there was like two or three others, very small, very small subdivisions.
For the smaller subdivision, they've granted lots of waivers of roadways, construction standards, sidewalks, those types of things. They have required those to be private, private ways. But this one and another one that you'll be seeing have been constructed to the standards of the subdivision regulation. So I think, and they're larger, I mean, they're not huge, six lots roughly each, but the roadways are constructed, you know, pretty much fully confined.
Okay.
May I ask where, this procedure for layout and acceptance of public ways, where where did this come from?
Came from KP a number of years ago.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm not familiar with it, so.
It's the first time I've laid eyes on it, too.
Actually, before I, last month, I asked town council to to update this and make sure it's still kosher.
Okay.
Because the way it was done in the past, the town has not accepted it properly, okay? And especially to have to do with drainage. The town winds up having these properties with the drainage on it, then they're responsible for it. And, you know, who's responsible for the taxes and stuff, you know, went on. So the other question, actually, I just reminded myself, in the write-up, it talks about easements and stuff like that. I assume that the developer is going to provide all those documentation for the easement, not the town.
No.
Right? Okay. All right, thanks, thanks, Mark.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we need Mark for number 16 or.
16.
And then I think that's it, right, Mark? For you?
Yes, the end of the meeting. It's going to be a while.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to take that one out of order or not, but I'm just suggesting.
Okay, we can do that.
This is coming back.
Number 16. Okay, this is a request from the residents of La Barron for project change. And this is not changing their overall project. They're modifying it to do a certain number of drawings and so on. So did you want to say anything about this? I mean, I have some concerns about it.
Well, I can answer some some questions for you. I mean, again, we haven't had, the public hearing hasn't opened yet with the zoning board.
Thursday, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I guess a couple of my concerns is that, number one, that, and I'm almost positive this is correct, but I want to make sure this is correct, is that the wastewater treatment plant can handle the additional, not additional, can handle these particular items, this housing.
He's indicated, Mohammed has indicated that it it can. I, we do not have documentation, let's say, from his engineer, but.
I would suggest that we get the documentation from the engineer.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that that wastewater treatment plant is not a problem because it's huge, it's big. And it has to be approved by DEP and it was approved by DEP a long time ago. The second thing was the water allocation. I believe that they're within the allocation, they have a water permit that was issued by the town.
Yep.
And I just want to have them confirm that as well.
Okay.
The last issue is that they want Front Avenue, access to Front Avenue. I would, I think we insist that if they're going to be using Front Avenue, they completely reconstruct, you know, Front Avenue.
Yes, I've discussed that with him and told him I want to see a full set of drawings for how how that's going to be reconstructed, including drainage, sidewalks as well.
Including a sidewalk on the.
Right.
Right-hand side.
Continue, continue, they have a sidewalk now about three quarters of the way down.
Right.
Barron Drive, whatever the name really is, so.
I've already received two calls from residents on the access to Fern Drive just since this posted, so I'm sure more folks would be.
Well, that's actually a good thing, to be honest with you.
But I think people just want to know what, you know.
One of the problems is that the school buses, you know, even though there's only 12 kids in that whole development, believe it or not, so, but there's a cul-de-sac that's being proposed there, so they would come down Front Avenue and go into that cul-de-sac that they got the school kids. Because right now, I mean, we used to only have one entrance there, now there's two entrances, so for them, they're not supposed to go in there at all, you know? That should be addressed, so.
And I just have one thing about the the Fern Ave, too. If there's, you know, what's what's the the pressure on Precinct Street? You know, having that.
You know, having that become a full access to that development? That's all.
I don't think there'd be any pressure at all. It would be, it'd be better to go that way than to go up there into 79.
Yeah, I mean, it'll help disperse the traffic from the development.
Right, but, and I know, I just wanted to know, you know, based on, you know, the layout of, you know, this new proposal, if that's going to redirect some of the the traffic that's already going out into 79 onto Precinct, that's all. Because when we start that project on Route 79, I believe that that'll probably reroute if this does go through, you know, through that way. I'm just aware, I want to be just aware of that.
I'm sure you can have someone do an analysis of what the daily traffic would be for the added units. Compare that to the existing conditions. And traffic engineers can figure out generally how people use and disperse through the three exits, so so that they can estimate what the average daily traffic would be in and out of the new entrance on Fern Ave.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a couple. So I know we have two residents, I think, that have been vocal about their actual water bill.
Association problem.
Well, I was going to say, do we have any right to ask how they're billed? I mean, I would be curious to find out how they're billed by actual usage, or they...
They have an association, they set the rates, they set the fees, nothing to do with the town.
So we should encourage those folks to reach out to their association, correct?
Yep. They have a voting association, they decide, you know, what it's going to be, and they approve the rates. Town has nothing to do with it at all.
No, I know, I just didn't know if we have a right to ask, you know, so that we know, too. You know, when someone calls saying, oh, I paid, I think I paid too much in water, I have no place to actually start. I don't, you know.
They start with the president of the association.
And then the other thing on this is the actual select board does not make, we just make a recommendation, we don't make an approval or not on this, correct?
It's Board of Appeals.
Yes, the Board of Appeals.
This would be as if the planning board sent you something to comment on.
Our recommendations, yeah, okay.
Comment about things that you're aware of, the buddies have talked to you about, et cetera. Just as you would for a planning board.
Okay, thank you.
And this is being heard on Thursday, you said?
Starting, yeah, Thursday, it'll probably go multiple meetings. And it's a significant change.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So number nine.
We're at number nine, discuss and vote to approve the request of Lakeville Arts Council to place signs for the annual arts music festival. The board has received the annual request from the Lakeville Arts Council to place a three-by-five A-frame sign on the island, the intersection of Precinct Street and 79, one week prior to the October 1st. They will contact the police department to approve the sightline once in place. They're also asking permission to place 25 wired signs on private properties, which we don't really have to approve, to announce the festival one week prior. I would also like to place a three-by-10 banner at the top of Dick Green's Dryer Square one week prior. They are working with the DPW director on the first. So I entertain a motion to approve their request.
Someone will second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is to discuss and possible vote to issue a proclamation in honor of Elizabeth Bryant's 100th birthday. Boy, is that exciting.
So, may I take over?
Oh, you can take over, sure.
Okay. So I did attend her birthday celebration at the senior center the other day. She was quite the spitfire. She had more energy than most of us there. It was quite nice. I felt badly that we didn't have the actual proclamation, but, you know, I think we went an extra week between meetings, so. But I assured her she would get it in the mail, and I told her if she wanted me to, I'd go read it. But that they could tune in tonight. So if I may, I make a motion that we approve this proclamation. Whereas Elizabeth Bryant is a citizen of Lakeville, and whereas Elizabeth Bryant was born on August 10, 1922, and was awarded the Boston Post cane on August 12, 2022 in honor of being Lakeville's oldest living resident. And whereas Elizabeth Bryant is a first-generation Portuguese-American who worked as a hairdresser for 25 years and moved to Lakeville in 1979 with her family. And whereas Elizabeth Bryant is the proud mother of her son Roger and has two grandchildren, six great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. Now therefore be it resolved that the select board in the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts do hereby proclaim August 10, 2022, as Elizabeth Bryant Day in honor of Elizabeth Bryant reaching the distinguished age of 100 years. The select board do hereby request that all citizens congratulate Elizabeth Bryant for her achievement. On behalf of the select board and the citizens of the town of Lakeville, this resolution is signed, sealed, and delivered on this 15th day of August in the year of 2022. Bye.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yay, Elizabeth! I hope she's watching. She said she would.
And she goes to coffee on Friday morning.
She does go to coffee.
She's quite a person.
Yep, she is.
Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss and possible vote on the request for outdoor entertainment permit on 76 Kingland Street for September 24, 2022. So Jonathan Harris of 76 Kingland Street has requested an outside entertainment permit for September 24, 2022, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM for a backyard cookout, the entertainment, the acoustical guitar player with a speaker. I guess he has, this permit has been issued for a number of years, and the police chief reports that there's been no issue. So I'm going to send a motion to approve the permit.
Someone for discussion?
Second with discussion.
I just, the question that I had here in the email that Tracy had sent the police chief, you know, because of last issue with outdoor entertainment permit, I'm not quite sure.
So I can probably explain.
Okay, so it's...
So two weeks, two Saturdays ago, we had an issue with a different entertainment permit that we issued. And they had an entertainment permit there. But I do believe that going forward, the board needs to ask more specific questions because they were given an entertainment permit for music and a neighborhood barbecue. And in fact, what took place was not necessarily a rock concert, but definitely a live band on a stage with some sort of a light show that required generators to keep it going. So when there was an altercation between neighbors and watch the whole body cam footage. So I think that going forward, not necessarily for this, because this particular person we've never had an issue with, but the police felt as though there was nothing they could really do because they had a permit until 10 o'clock. So this gentleman gets the same permit that, with an acoustic guitar, that these other residents had with a live band on a stage. So I think going forward, we need to...
Establish criteria?
Yeah. And I did talk to Ed Cullen, the board of health agent, and he said that we do have a noise ordinance, but that would mean we would have to get him out there. But there's, you know, if someone's having 100 or 150 people at an outdoor party, then perhaps we should be requiring things like porta potties. So mental note to the town administrator to remind us at some point before these permits start coming in again for next year, that we should probably start.
Or have a policy, something, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
So that's probably what, that's what he meant was that one.
Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is discuss and vote the request of Richard Palletti to be reappointed as the constable, as a constable. I entertain a motion to approve that. His term will expire on August 12, 2023.
I'll move second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so next is discuss the possible vote on the town administrator's review and goals. Excuse me for one second, please.
I can't believe you're that cold. Oh my God. He's not back in six minutes.
Marina, it was very interesting watching the body cameras.
Well, I remember seeing something somewhere, I don't know if it was a an email or something that came through.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, so there were, you know, noise complaints and everything, too.
But yeah, I think having that, you know, kind of parameters around that would be most helpful.
Should we go to recess?
No, we can wait for him to come back.
Okay. You cold, Tracy?
Yes.
All right, the first thing is the goals. At our last meeting, we talked about the goals. We finalized the goals, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the goals for fiscal '23 for the town administrator.
Someone will second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I appreciate you updating that list. Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda, next on the agenda is to to do the review of the town administrator. Do you want to explain the process that we've gone through the years since you were...
Sure. So what we've all received was the goals, and then we received the previous goals so that we had a, something to rate the town administrator by that was more objective. And then we have these performance evaluations that we were all going to fill out. So I don't know if anyone wants to reveal their scores. All these will get put together, and a copy will be put in the town administrator's permanent file and perhaps the clerk's office. I also typed up a summary that we can attach to the file if we so choose. You know, that says the three select board members have conducted a review of town administrator Ari Sky. A copy of each select board member's review of Mr. Sky will go into his permanent employment folder at this time. It has been determined that Mr. Sky has met the goals assigned him previously by the select board, and the new goals for 2023 have been agreed upon. And then I did leave an open space for any review findings. So I don't know if anyone wants to go through this page by page, if anyone wants to read their comments. It's, you know, I, it's however you all want to do it.
I've never done this before, so...
Me neither.
Are you looking to me?
So, you know, I don't necessarily think we have to go through. I will say that I've given the town administrator a favorable, you know, review across the board. But I would like to offer a narrative that I wrote. And it says, "Ari Sky received time marks from me because it takes a very talented, organized, and professional manager to come in and create a calm workplace for staff and a good environment for the public after there was so much transition in the selectmen's office and the town administrators' offices," which that was a situation that you walked into in May of 2021. Mr. Sky did all that and immediately set to work to get items done, like reviewing the entire health insurance benefits, which had been on the to-do list for 18 months. And I am extremely pleased with Mr. Sky's overall performance. So that's what I put in writing. I don't know if anyone else. But I would give the specific here, but I would give the town administrator a very favorable review. I don't know if anyone else wants to offer theirs publicly.
I have an error, too. Do you want to do yours?
Again, I'm not sure how we do this, but, you know, I mean, I put a conclusion in here for myself, but there are some very key things that, you know, I touched upon. But, you know, in conclusion, I found that Ari has generally met expectations on the majority of topics identified in this evaluation tool. The areas that needing improvement fall under the categories of just interpersonal skills and relationships and verbal communication. Ari meets and exceeds expectations in the budget, fiscal management, and policy implementation portions of this evaluation.
Okay.
Okay. Basically, what I did was, I, you know, I did the the form, and certainly 99% of them, you know, he exceeded the expectation, the excellence in almost all cases. But as far as the narrative is concerned, it says, "What would you identify the town administrator's strengths expressed in terms of principal results during the rating period?" When we were looking for a new town administrator, we wanted to make sure that we had a town administrator that had a lot of experience, and that was one of our primary goals. But some of the things that I think were very important that have been achieved during the last year is that, you know, he's responsible for the administration, develop of the annual operating budget, and he certainly did a fantastic job. The presentation was outstanding. It was done earlier than it has ever been and presented and available to the townspeople who were in advance. The capital improvement plan, he took that capital improvement program and updated it and made sure that the plan was in place. That was a significant improvement, you know, over prior years. He negotiated union contracts, especially as Leo's already, I don't know who mentioned it, you know, the health insurance issue. And he coordinated grants and insurances. We applied for a number of grants this past year, and we've gotten a significant amount of grant money and a lot to do with Christina, you know, as well. And I think he supervised, he supervises the daily operations for the town extremely well. He knows, you know, what's going on and what needs to be done. And one important thing that I think is very, very important, he has strong relationships at the state level and the local, the local level, you know. So when you're looking to get something done, you know, you have to have the right people to call and help you support that, and he's done that. One of the things that was lacking before he started was technology, and he has extensive background in technology, who have made significant improvements, you know, in the technology for the town, you know, making sure that things have backed up in new servers and cybersecurity and so forth and so on. One of the things that has been a challenge for everybody is overseeing the maintenance and control of town facilities. So he's made a lot of improvements, you know, in that area. So he's made a lot of improvements, you know, in that area. Are we where we should be yet? No, we're not. And the other thing is the, uh, ability to communicate professionally and interact cooperatively with the public in, uh, a variety of settings. The town administrator is always out front there in, uh, dealing with, you know, some of the issues. His leadership skills, ability to analyze an issue, uh, propose a recommended solution and present the solution to the various boards and committees and town meetings. And he's done that. Some of the areas that need improvement, I think that one of the things is that he updates the board, but I think that the, he needs to update the board on a more regular basis concerning issues in town projects. The, the second thing is that I think he needs to get more involved in the planning items and decisions, you know, for the town. Um, and there's been a lot going on, you know, having to do with that. The other thing that needs to be approved that is necessarily not his responsibility, but he needs to work with the boards to improve, uh, policy and procedure for the boards and committees. So, uh, overall, I think he's done a terrific job and he's a big asset, you know, to the town.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, I would say the review is favorable overall and if everyone could just submit.
There you go.
I'll make copies.
I made a copy.
You made a copy?
Yep.
I have a copy. I, I turned a copy into, um, John Vio.
Oh, John Viarelo?
In his, um, inbox.
Okay, okay.
I put that in there last night.
So I'll, um, so I did type this up. We can use it. We don't have to use it. It just basically says what we just did, that we did, um, this. So we can use it. We don't have to. We don't have to do anything at all. But if we want to, we can use this or create something else.
This is fine because all of our stuff is going to be attached to this anyways.
Right.
Oh, you got it.
Yep, she has one. So then I'll just, um, attach this one and we can all sign one. And we can just write favorable on it and. All right. Do you sign anyone?
Want to start signing, please, Ma'am? Thank you.
Yep. Start with that one.
Start with this one?
Do you want to see this?
Yes.
No, I don't want to see it.
Oh.
I just want to thank you all for your thoughtful consideration and feedback. I do appreciate it. It's been a challenging year, um, in a lot of ways, um, but gratifying as well. And it's good to have a, uh, strong, um, board that knows what, sort of, the, the, the strong, present, engaged board to work with, um, as, as we move forward. I've enjoyed this partnership very much.
And you notice we didn't even mention COVID, which is a whole other thing. I'm tired of talking about COVID.
My first week on the job, I think, we, we had a COVID issue.
Yeah, we did.
And you did a good job on that area, too.
Yep, yep. All right.
Okay.
So I will put all the rest of this together and make sure it goes to the appropriate place.
All right, we ready to go on to the next letter? All set?
Yep.
Okay. So discuss, uh, a vote to accept Frederick, um, Fordhami?
Frodoma.
Frodoma, thank you. Resignation of the Open Space Committee in Conservation. Do you want to make that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is, uh, to accept Paula, resignation from the Council on Aging and representative of the Old Colony Planning Area Agency on the registry book.
Make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is that, uh, the review and possible vote to approve the selectmen's meetings of, of July 11th, 2022 and July 25th, 2022.
Hold on, I have a note here. I'll make a motion, um, that we approve the select board meeting minutes of July 11th, 2022 and July 25th, 2022 with a question.
One second. Okay, discussion.
Okay, if you, um, on July, I don't know if you picked up on this, but on July 11th, um, minutes, if you go to page three, when we discussed the possible vote on the article for the special town meeting warrant, Catherine Beals, the town moderator, was there. But when we look at the July 25th, we have Catherine Goodfellow. So I think it should be Goodfellow.
It should be.
And it was listed at, just in a couple of different places on the 11th? Because I think she's listed as Goodfellow, right?
That's correct.
As the moderator.
Okay, we'll fix those. Any, uh, the questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay, we don't have anything under new business and we don't have anything under old business.
We'll probably do, um, future meetings next meeting. Future meeting dates, right?
Uh, we already talked about the meeting dates, but there's one date that's going to change. I, uh, I gotta talk to you first.
I know, we, we can't, it's on this agenda, so anyway, but we should just talk about it next time.
Correct, yeah, right, because I haven't had a chance to.
Yep.
I have one thing under, um, I guess it would fall under old. It's under the, um, the other items that are included in here. We received a letter from the Open Space Committee. My question to this board is, why would the Open Space Committee not be involved in the development of the Open Spaces or the Open Space residential development law?
Why aren't they?
That's my question.
It's their responsibility. We have nothing to do with it at all. It's, it's a planning board. So, I mean, all they got to do, if they were given a copy of the, the.
Since my understanding that the planning board clerk distributes.
Yeah, it was distributed.
Plans, the plans to Open Space as well.
So the question is, did they give any responses back to the planning board and why didn't they attend the meetings?
I just, I just found that to be very interesting, you know, letter.
It's up to them to.
I would think that they should be involved in that, but.
Well, they can be, but I don't know what they're doing. I mean, the, the Board of Health has been involved in the meetings.
Yep.
And Conservation has been involved in the meetings.
Conservation.
So, I mean, all they have to do is request, we, uh, go to the town planner or the chairman of the, uh, planning board and say, hey, you want to meet with them?
But we just, we just accepted Fred's, um, yeah, resignation. Okay.
We'll get Ari to, uh, or Ari about to reach out to the Open Space a little bit.
No, I'm pretty sure Kathy sends us around.
I know she does.
I know she does, so I'm, we'll follow up with the committee.
Just to tie in that.
Well, and I mean, we can't, well, that's an appointed board, so maybe we could encourage the chair to send more information, but it sounds to me.
They don't really have a formal role in the development process.
Right.
But certainly it's appropriate as a subject matter expert, to ask them to weigh in if they have opinions about something.
True, right.
Right, because they just mentioned the review of it.
Yep.
Well, they were given the opportunity.
To provide.
To provide it.
Yeah.
According to Mark, they didn't provide anything. Mark, resign.
They were, they were very active when we had the right person for you to question. They, they were very involved in that. And that was on the road. We should, so I, I don't know.
Okay, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.